Okay, we're gonna get started. It's 6:30, everybody. Welcome to the June 13, 2024, meeting of the zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Do we have the roll call, please?
Dave Hale.
Here.
Brian Flynn.
Here.
Travis Santo.
Here.
Brian Bennett.
Here.
Craig Bennett.
Here.
Ellen McKay and Andrew Ramadollar, excuse you, you have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. We have minutes to approve from last time, from April 17. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Move to approve.
I need to abstain from voting. I wasn't on the minutes. I wasn't seated on the board yet. Oh.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there an objection to approving the minutes? Seeing non-minutes are approved. Special Order of Business, we have disclosures. I'll take disclosures, starting from my left.
Yeah, Craig Bennett, I possibly have a conflict on case 2024-0059, as my company, S4, did the ASBILT at the beginning of the year, and I wanted to bring it up to the board.
So your company, S4, did the ASBILT, and the question is, can he participate? Are there any thoughts from the board on this? I'm inclined to, since he did the ASBILT, to say that he probably should not participate.
I only would wonder about the loss of a quorum at that point.
We would, yeah. So we'd need to, if we do that, we've got to postpone the case until next day.
I really don't have any problem with him participating, myself. He looks like an honest gentleman to me.
Can I get a point of clarification? Did you do the actual ASBILT, or you just worked for the same company?
One of my surveyors did the ASBILT.
Yeah. Yeah, the thing is that, I mean, he's one of the, are you an owner of S4? Yeah, so you stand to benefit financially, so it's kind of the root of ethics, if you're gonna, so I mean, in the spirit of, of...
I'll go along with that.
Okay, so I'm gonna say, we don't have enough people here for a vote, so it's up to me, and I'm gonna say that you should not participate and abstain from that, which means that unfortunately, we're gonna have to move H4 to next month, because we've got a short board tonight. So I apologize for that. Is that you?
That's me.
I apologize, but we want to make this fair, and in order to do that, sometimes it's kind of a pain. I'll come forward and give your name, so we could, yeah, if you could say your name and spell it, then we could...
Is that microphone on?
No.
There's a button down there that should turn red or something.
What?
Yeah, there you go.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Bethany Monfore, B-E-T-H-A-N-Y-M-O-N-F-O-R-E.
Okay, go ahead and say what you were saying.
Oh, I just wanted to make the point. He, his company did the server, survey, right? But it was also, it was someone else that we worked with, and someone else did the plot plan, and we will not be engaging with his company for anything else moving forward, so I don't see how he's gonna benefit if this is approved.
So he did the original ASBILT, but he's not doing anything going forward?
No.
But he did benefit financially from some of the work with this?
Respectfully, there was no one else available. So... And delaying it a month is a really, as you know, really big impact in building projects for Alaskans, so...
Yeah, 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 right. There any other thoughts from the board?
So you, you don't have, you are not currently engaging with your, with S4?
No.
Your case tonight is not being represented, or you're not utilizing S4?
No, they didn't write the narrative. They did nothing. They came out and did the survey, and that was it.
How long ago was that?
March? Early, I think March or early April?
Yeah, March 2024, yeah. So it was in March. So really, he did the ASBILT, and that kind of precipitated all of this, right? And so now you're moving forward, trying to correct it, but you're not using S4 at all?
Not at all.
And you don't have any intention of working with these guys in the future?
Not on this. No.
Does the staff have any input to this? I mean, you guys understand the repercussions of this.
Through the chair, Mr. Hale, or Chair Hale, one, for the purpose of the discussion, one thing is, so if, say, R&amp;M had done the survey, you know, last year, or sometime in the past, and now there's a variance application before the board involving, you know, the company that you're part owner for, but that you have no more work with, I mean, you can see that that, that happening, the fact that they don't have an ongoing project, it doesn't seem like there's a financial benefit from it. That's for the purpose of the discussion, something maybe a factor to consider.
Yeah, thank you.
Through the chair, and to the whole board, I might add, if we do hear it, and then there's the matter of they will have to get a final ASBILT after the house is built. You know, you could entertain the idea that they, they couldn't use the surveyor that they used for the final ASBILT.
Yeah.
But we'd also want to approach the property owner with that as well, and explain that that would mean hiring someone else to do your final ASBILT after the house is built. It's when you close out your building permit, you need to provide an ASBILT. Usually, the person uses the original person they hired to do the plot plan. You could make a condition where, and then maybe that's, you know, ethical, or lays it out. That's just a thought, as well.
Yeah, it's a dilemma we have in Anchorage, is everyone's working together, and we run out of people pretty quick, if everybody recuses. Okay, so with all that said, and I appreciate you coming forward and adding that, that's valuable, and staff, too, thank you. With all that said, it sounds to me like we can direct, Craig, Mr. Bennett, to participate. Does anyone have any objection to that, if he participates?
None.
Okay, well, let's move forward.
Right now?
No, right now.
Okay.
Bye.
I'll come back. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna do all of that. Yeah, so do you have a disclosure for this? Anybody else have a disclosure? Everybody else is good? All right, should be gravy going forward. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Where are we? So we've got a short board tonight, which means that we don't, I mean, we've got a quorum, but we don't have a full board, so it's, it's called a short board. And so if there's a short board, everybody can, the rules, the rules don't change, but there are some options to petitioners if they want. So I gotta read this couple paragraphs to you, and kind of explain it a little bit. So when there's a short board, or a commission, and a postponement is offered to and agreed to by the petitioner, they'll be moved to the next regular agenda. So that's within 30 days, which doesn't require re-noticing, or hearing notices, or advertising, it's just, we just move it. So if you, if you want to postpone, you can. If you're unable to attend the next available meeting within 30 days, you got a one-time option to choose the next date after that to attend. So basically, if, if you don't like having a short board, if you want the full board to hear your petition, you can stand up and say, hey, we want to do it next month instead, when there's more board members. Is there anyone here that wants to do that with your case? Could you really spell your name for us?
Sorry, we'll be here a while. Laquita Chmilowski, C-H-M-I-E-L-O-W-S-K-I, and we would like to ask for a postponement tonight.
Okay, and which, which one was that?
The DEC variance for EBBY.
Case, case 2023-0065.
Okay, so we'll postpone 2023-0065 until next month, July 17.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Is everybody else good with, tonight with a short board? Okay. All right, awesome. We'll hold that for next time. Get my agenda going. So, pretty much to the public hearings now, so there's some, the way that we're gonna do this, I'll explain it a little bit. I'm gonna try not to read it, because it's kind of, kind of long and boring. So basically, the, your case got, got public notice before you guys showed up, so we got to, we collected all the comments. The staff is going to introduce the, the case, they're gonna explain what all's been done so far. The petitioner's gonna have a chance to come forward and talk about it, and, or their representative to talk about it. They have 10 minutes to talk, and you can talk as much as you want till 10 minutes, and then you get cut off. There's a light here that it'll be green, and it'll start blinking just before, and you want to start wrapping it up. And when it hits red, then time's up. And if you only use a couple minutes, you can hold that, and just, just say that you want to, what's the word for it? Yeah? You can use it for rebuttal later. So if you use two minutes, then you get eight minutes later. So what it'll do is, you'll present, and it will let other people talk to, and then we'll have some discussion, and then you could always come back and use the last eight minutes before we close down the public hearing part of things. If you're part of a group, or a community council, you get five minutes. I don't see anybody else. And individuals get three minutes, looks like. So we'll just kind of go in order for each of these cases. We'll introduce the case, we'll have the testimony. Once the testimony and everything's all done, we'll close it, and it rests with the board, and it's just up to the board to, to decide on it at that point. So we'll try to step through this. If anybody has any questions, feel free to speak up. Anybody have any questions about the process? Okay, so I think we're ready for, did I miss anything, Lori? I think we're ready for our first case, which is gonna be 2024-0047, and can we get the staff to explain? What is it? This is the notice, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the sufficiency of notice. On May 21, 2024, a total of 148 public hearing notices were mailed by the Planning Department to the public. The application was also routed to the Sand Lake Community Council. There were no comments received from the Community Council. There was one letter of support received from one of the neighbors in support of the granting of the variance, and this is in a supplemental piece of paper for the board. Also, the applicant provided a letter of support for granting the variance, signed by 17 neighbors, including the immediate neighbors to the west and to the north.
Thank you. Does anyone have any objection to the sufficiency of the notice? Seems like it was pretty well noticed. Everybody got the handout for H2, the addition? They've read all that? Okay. Will the staff, please, present the case?
Yes, thank you. I believe it'll be helpful to look at page six of your packets, this H2 packet. The ASBILT shows the garage and the encroachment into the front setback. The pages after page six, the ASBILT, there are photos of the garage, and then there, after that, there's a topography map, a couple topography maps that are helpful. Finally, on page 24 of your packet, the, the petitioner in this case, in his application, provided a helpful profile diagram of a cross-section of his property, and where the garage is, and where it would be if it was set back 20 feet from the front property line. It's a helpful diagram to review. None of the state and municipal reviewing agencies object to the granting of the variance. Their comments are attached. AWU stated that the garage encroachment into Terrace Drive right-of-way may cross over a cast-iron water main. This needs to be resolved through obtaining a right-of-way encroachment permit with the right-of-way division. The right-of-way encroachment permit should be a condition of approval, and the applicant is already pretty far along in doing locates and working with AWU in the right-of-way division to resolve this. So this is a request for a variance from the Dimensional Standards for Residential Districts to allow a two-car garage to encroach 20 feet, 100% into the required 20-foot front setback in the R1 district. The need for the variance was discovered by the, the current property owner, owner in 2020 during a building permitting, during building permitting for a home remodel. The carport, now a garage, has existed in the current location since 1970, or earlier, but it's not eligible, is not eligible for non-conforming rights, because it did not predate zoning. The garage was built by the previous owner. Their current owner has an encroachment permit for the portion of the garage that is within the Terrace Drive right-of-way, but a condition of approval would be to obtain a new one. The Planning Department found that all of the approval criteria are met. I'm gonna try and quickly give you some highlights. With approval criteria A, the extraordinary physical circumstance of the subject property is the topography. There is significant grade change on the north half of the lot. There's approximately 29% slope downhill on the north side. The roof eaves of the house are close to level with the street. There are other lots in the neighborhood that are also affected by topography, but this lot in particular has the steepest on Terrace Drive, on their street. Two-car garages are a common ride of enjoyment. In regards to approval criteria B, two-car garages are a common ride of enjoyment in this neighborhood, and a great amenity during the wintertime. The topography and relatively small street frontage make it very difficult for this lot to have both a home and a garage without encroaching into the front setback. Strict application of the front setback creates undue hardship for the property owner. Terrace Drive was recently constructed with type 2 curb and gutter. There is no sidewalk on either side of the street, but the street functions adequately as designed. There are no plans to widen the street at this time. Further road improvements and sidewalks are a low priority at this location, because the street is a dead end, and it serves a small number of homes. Approval criteria C, the unique physical condition of the land, which is a combination of the plating and the slope of the lot, meet the standard. The lot is very steeply sloped, and there's relatively small amount of area on the street to site both a house and a garage. The south side of Terrace Drive drops off at a steep slope where abutting this lot. Two, two-car garages are an important amenity for living in northern climates, where there's cold temperatures and large amounts of snow accumulation. The garage could not be built outside of the front setback with the existing house. Therefore, a variance for 100% encroachment into the front setback is necessary. The hardship is not self-imposed. Approval criteria D is met. There's no structural separation violations or drainage runoff issues. Approval criteria E, the variance does not change the character of the zoning district, that's certain. Approval criteria F, there are no identified health or safety issues with the property. There is sufficient space for road maintenance, no storage, fire, and EMS services. Approval criteria G, this is not related to reasonable accommodation or ADA accessibility. Approval criteria H, the property owner is seeking relief from the 20-foot front setback requirement in the R1 district in order to keep an existing two-car garage. The garage encroaches 20% in the front setback. This is the minimum variance that will make it possible for a reasonable, reasonable use of the land. The department's recommending approval for this variance, subject to conditions 1 through 3 on page 5 of your packet. I'll just note that, that conditions of approval 1 and 2 are standard. The third condition of approval is to obtain a new encroachment permit from the MOA right-of-way division. Now, there's one change to the conditions of approval that I would ask that the, that the board make. On condition of approval number 1, at the very end of it, where it says, prepared by Ken Lang, registered professional surveyor, where there's the period, I would ask that you add a comma, and then the phrase, "or as otherwise approved by planning." This will give the Planning Department the ability to work with the property owner if the proportions of the structure need to be moved. So if he is not able to, say, you know, rebuild the, the, the water, water main, then he could keep the structure and maybe shift it a little bit to meet the requirements of AWU. Adding the phrase, comma, "or as otherwise approved by planning," will give the property owner a little bit of flexibility to work on the, their one remaining issue. Thanks for your time. I'd be happy to answer questions, and the applicant is here and prepared to speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Does, anyone on the board have questions of staff at this time?
I have a question, please.
Chair?
I'm Brian Bennett. It says that in the report, I believe on about page 31 or 32, that the, cannot support the, the AOW encroachment because of the water main underneath the property, underneath the proposed structure. How, how does that condition of paying for any required work if that main breaks? It's 65 years old, and I'm just thinking of the recent episodes down in Atlanta, among other places. Could you care to comment on that kind of, what's going on there, and in, not just now, but in the future?
Through the chair, Mr. Bennett, I will try and answer your questions best I can. As I understand it, it, well, at the time of this writing, we weren't sure if the structure may actually be on top of the main.
Oh, okay.
And because of its age, it will fail at some point, and so the structure can't continue to be on top of the main. So step 1 is to meet with AWU, and to do a locate and verify whether or not the structure crosses onto the main. And then 2 is to work out a plan on how to deal with that, whether it be moving the main, or moving the structure. And, and I think that some preliminary meetings, the property owner has proactively engaged with AWU to do that.
To do which?
Well, to work with AWU planning. They need to do cost estimates. It's just gonna, it's gonna take a little bit of time, and maybe at this point, they know what they're gonna do. But the purpose of, of, you know, sort of my long-winded presentation was just to say that that's something that can be worked out at the staff level, and still allow a decision to proceed tonight.
Is, is that written into the variance, the language that requires that communication written into the, into the variance somehow, to require that? I'm kind, I'm kind of imagining you moving the mains, and I'm not thinking that's really very practical as an economic viability. So you're gonna more than likely move the structure.
You're basically saying, we're going to allow it to encroach the full 20 feet? Sorry. So wherever they move it within that 20 feet, should still meet the variance? Am I right?
That's right. The Planning Department finds that the, this particular property and conditions support the granting of a variance to encroach into the front setback, and, and even if the structure's not exactly in its current location, it could be cited elsewhere. If, if the, if the owner had to completely tear down the garage and rebuild it, should he be required to rebuild it, meeting the 20-foot setback? We believe no.
So typically, it'd be like a variance to allow it to encroach 5.52 feet, or whatever?
Right, this is, this is excessive.
This is a blanket thing.
Yeah. Oh, so you don't expect to use that whole 20 feet? Excuse me.
Through the chair, the only thing that I think I can add to this discussion is to just say that if any one of the five board members thinks that they may, when it comes time to make a motion, to, feels inclined to vote to not approve the, the variance, then they should make sure to state that in order to give the, the board the potential opportunity to postpone to a meeting where there's more, more board members and more votes present. Does that, is there any question about that?
No, I got no question about that. Do I understand that the, the actual location of the pipe is not determined yet?
Mr. Commissioner, Board Member Bennett, can you direct that question to the property owner? No, you, you did find, that's fine. I just, I don't know.
Okay, fair enough.
We can ask him a little later. So as I understand all this, it's, it's, there is serious topography. The front of that lot, where that garage is, is about where it needs to be. We're just not sure where it needs to be, but they're gonna need the full 20 feet to fix it.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's a different...
So there we go. Okay. Is there any other questions? Anybody has? Does the applicant have any questions of staff at this time? You don't have any questions, then we can, we can roll into your presentation, but I gotta introduce you. There you go.
I just want, wanted to answer the question about the water main location.
Can we hold on one quick?
What's that?
Can you just state your name for the record and spell it, please?
Peter Cruz, property owner in this case. The water main does go under the garage, and it does a 90-degree bend. So as proposing to AWU, possibly we could put in a 45-degree bend, you know, come back, and cut the corner, leaving the garage off of the water main with a 10-foot margin for future work. I'm researching those costs, and probably, most likely, the cost could be very high, and it might make more sense just to excavate a new foundation, more appropriately located on the property, and build new. So that, we want to keep that option alive, and that's why Francis wanted to add the clause at the end, to give some latitude.
And part of that is, I mean, it's a main, so it benefits the community as a whole, right?
The main which?
The water main?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want to, you got a presentation that you want to give?
Sure.
You have 10 minutes.
Well, pretty much what I have is already been stated throughout the case. I don't mean to be too redundant. I don't mean to be too redundant, but originally, this subdivision was platted in 1964, and that was even predating any zoning back, you know, barely in the early borough days. And they, I don't think they were very conscientious about plating the lot, thinking about how somebody would build on the property, because obviously, the steep slope comes right up to the front property line. So really, actually, the location of the garage was a separate lot until a year or two ago. And part of the issue of, that was flagged in zoning was the garage was on a separate lot. So we replatted the lot into one. But that original lot that the garage was built on probably was not buildable back in the early day. And I suspect that's why one of the owners way back in the 60s hired somebody just to throw a carport on there and then subsequently enclosed it. And that's the condition we found the property when we bought in 1995. We figured it was grandfathered in because it'd been built way back, you know, in the But zoning flagged it, so here we are. Speaking to the conditions, I personally feel like all conditions are more than met. I, I feel like this is a very solid case. Number A, regarding the physical circumstances, obviously, the contours and the slope, as I've already stated, adversely affect the lot. And there is a profile shown in documents. If we were to move the garage back to the 20-foot setback, the, the garage would basically be about 10 or 15 feet above the ground. So there's really no practical way to make that happen. So the choice is either to tear down, move, move the garage, which is not practical, or tear it down. And that leaves us number B. In that circumstance, basically, that would take away our use of the garage, which everybody else in the neighborhood enjoys in the whole district. So that, that would be an undue hardship. And the hardship is not self-imposed. This isn't something that we did. We've in good faith bought the property, and when it came time to have a building permit, we applied for the building permit. We tried to do everything above board. The variance number D, variance will not affect adjacent property. This garage is, these are large lots, and the garage is about 80 feet from any of the nearest structure. And I know all the neighbors. The neighbors have been there for years and years, and nobody feels like there's any problem with the garage. Number E, variance granted does not change the character of the zoning district. One, one point that I would make on this is the, the property line is already, because of the way the subdivision was planted, the right-of-way line is already about more than 20 feet away from the curb in that location. So even if we, we built the garage up to the property line inside the 20-foot setback, we would still have, in effect, the, the setback that everybody else has in the neighborhood. Number F, does not affect health and safety of people in the municipality. I can't think of any cell, health or safety problem with the garage in that location. G, ADA, the structure's on the ground level. There's no problem there. H, variance granted is the minimum variance to make it possible, reasonable use of the land. And that's all we're asking for is just allow the garage to be within the 20-foot setback so we can have a reasonable use of the property.
Three minutes, 55 seconds left for rebuttal. Does the board have any questions? The applicant? Okay. Staff, do you guys have any questions? Anybody?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, are there any community council members or anybody here that wanna testify or individuals? Nope. Not a lot of people. So you can keep speaking for another three minutes and 55 seconds if you want, or you could just let it go.
Yeah. Do you wanna say anything? I don't know. There's not much to say. You know, I've been told I'm not the best-sells person in the world.
That's okay. I think the important thing with all of this is, you know, for people to work with staff and to work with all the professionals and, you know, try to do what's reasonable for the community. And when you do that, usually, there's good outcomes.
Yeah. I wanna make, you know, I always wanna make it right. And I will say that going around the neighborhood, talking to all the neighbors, and, you know, they're all 100% behind support of this. I can't believe that there'd be any question after 55 years of the garage being there that whole, all that time.
Yeah. Things get, seem to get caught way down the line.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. We appreciate your.
Okay. Thank you.
Testimony. And not seeing anybody else that wants to speak, we'll close the public hearing at this time, and the matter will rest with the board. So I believe that we're ready for a positive motion. So we've got a positive motion, and if someone wants to include a positive motion, we need to read that on the screen and then, oh, you already got that. Never mind. Just read the screen.
Are you ready? I move in case 2024-0047 to approve variance from AMC table 21.06-1, dimensional standards residential districts to allow a two-car garage to encroach 20 feet into the required 20-foot front setback in the R1 district, subject to conditions sewn on page five of the staff report and as amended tonight, with the addition of condition one to add language after land sur, the, after a land surveyor that reads or as otherwise approved by planning.
Thank you. And seconded by Mr. Bennett, Mr. Flynn, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I'd like to move in favor of this, of my motion. In, in reviewing both the staff and the applicant's notes tonight and all of the conditions being met, I believe that there is a, a case being met here tonight where it's not just the staff, but by the applicant, that they're, they've been working closely together as well as with AWU to make things right on a house that they purchased many years ago with the understanding that the, the garage was in compliance. I don't see anything that would otherwise change that or see anything that was, that has been done by this owner that would be in the negative. So I, I would, I would move to, for a positive motion.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Bennett?
I'd just like to add that there were no department objections, and it seems like 17 neighbors signed a letter in support, which is pretty telling. Not often you get that many letters in support.
Thank you. Any other board members like to say anything? Like to add anything? Okay. I think we're ready, ready to vote? Let's vote. So a vote yes is to give them the, approve the variance, a vote no is to disapprove. We have unanimous yes. The variance is approved. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Appreciate your time, and thanks for working with staff through all this stuff. Onward.
Enjoy your day.
So the next case we have is 2024-0021. Will the staff please describe the notice given?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On May 21st, '24, a total of 132 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC 2103020H notice. As of this writing, three public comments have been received. They are found on page 36 of your staff packet. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors did not provide comments regarding this case.
Thank you. Does anyone have any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, the staff please present the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It might help, like Francis said earlier, if you look at the handout I gave you with the red outline to kind of see where the existing structure is, where the proposed new structure is, and the allowable buildable area. Robert Ellison, the owner, is requesting a dimensional variance from AMC 2107020B12 to allow single-family dwelling to encroach into the Class C wetland setback. The existing single-story structure has a failing foundation that needs repair. In addition to fixing the failing foundation, the property owner would like to raise the existing main floor and build a new main floor underneath, creating a two-story design. They are also proposing the addition of a covered porch on the secondary front and covered decks on the primary, and primary front and rear, increasing the usable square footage of the existing structure that was constructed in 1974. The addition of a new main floor to this structure and covered decks would intensify the existing non-conformity and therefore require a variance from the primary front, secondary front, and wetland setbacks in its current location. The owner is trying to be proactive and move the structure towards conformity. Therefore, the owner is proposing to rebuild the same footprint with a main floor addition, porch, and covered decks in a new location, eliminating the need for a variance for the primary front and secondary front setbacks, and only requiring a variance from the 15-foot wetland setback. In order for the zoning board of examiners and appeals to approve the variance, the application must state with particularity, the relief sought and must specify the facts or circumstances that are alleged to show that the application substantially meets the following eight standards. Standard A, there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, including but not limited to streams, wetlands, or slope, and those circumstances are not applicable to other land in the same zoning district. Standard A is met. There are exceptional physical circumstances of the property regarding a large area of this lot designated as Class C wetlands. These lot ones cover approximately 60% of this lot. In addition to the wetlands, this lot has a primary and secondary frontage which creates additional physical circumstances that impact the remaining area to locate a single-family structure. When considering the wetlands 15-foot setback, primary front 20 feet along Timberline Drive and secondary front 10 feet along Chateau Place setbacks, the remaining buildable area for construction of a structure on this lot are reduced to approximately 1,500 square feet in the west corner of the lot and approximately 600 square feet in the southeast portion of the lot. This is represented on the, on page 15 of your staff packet and the handout I gave with the colored outline. Standard B, because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code creates an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance. Standard B is met. The Class C wetlands and setbacks provide a, provide a buildable area of approximately 1,500 square feet or 9% of this lot. This reduction in buildable area creates an undue hardship upon the property owner. Standard C, the hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience. Standard C is met. The owner is trying to be proactive and move the structure towards conformity. Therefore, the owner is proposing to rebuild the same footprint with a main floor addition, porch, and covered decks in a new location, eliminating the need for a variance for the primary front and secondary front setbacks, and only requiring the variance for the 15-foot wetland setback. Standard D, the variance, if granted, would adverse, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property as permitted under this code. Standard D is met. The relocation of this structure out of the primary front, secondary front setbacks will improve the sightlines at this intersection, creating a benefit to the adjacent properties. Standard E, the variance, if granted, does not change the character of the zoning district where the property is located, is in keeping with the intent of the code and does not permit a use not otherwise permitted in the district in which the property lies. Standard E is met. The variance does not change the character of the zoning district or the intent of the code. A single-family structure is commonly enjoyed in the neighborhood. Standard F, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard F is met. The relocation of this structure out of the primary front, secondary front setbacks will improve the sightlines at this intersection, creating a safety benefit to the people of the municipality. Standard G, persons with disabilities are provided with access as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act and reasonable accommodation. Standard G is met. The standard is not applicable to a single-family residence. Standard H, the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land. Standard H is not met. However, AMC 2106300C.2, projections into required setbacks allows for porches either covered or uncovered that are less than 50% of the length of a building's front elevation to encroach up to five feet into a front setback. Therefore, this proposed structure is allowed to shift five feet closer to Chateau Place, reducing the amount of encroachment but not eliminating the need to still encroach into the wetland setback. With this information, I'd like the board to know that the applicant had issues with getting their surveyor to provide them with an updated site plan showing the structure shifted five feet closer to Chateau Place, therefore providing the board an exhibit of what this would look like and the possible reduction in wetland setback encroachment this would still require. Reviewing agency comments are included in attachment three, starting on page 29 of your packet. There were no objections to the encroachment into the wetland setback. Therefore, the department finds that standard H is not met, and standards A, B, C, D, E, F, and G are met. Therefore, the department must recommend denial of the variance if, after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the following conditions, one and two, found on page five of your staff packet. I can answer any questions that the board may have, and the petitioner is in attendance.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions of staff? Don't see any. So is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward and state your name and spell it, please?
Hello. My name's Robert Ellison, E-L-L-I-S-O-N, and this is my wife, Vicki.
Thank you. You've got 10 minutes if you'd like to do your presentation.
So we purchased this house about two, two and a half years ago in Girdwood, and I can say the day that we signed the paperwork, I didn't realize that only 9% of our lot was gonna be buildable. We did know that the foundation was failing, and we had plans right away with a, with a local builder and discussed what our options were. But it was only after kind of beginning to get this permitting process, I've had to jump through some hoops with staff, and they've been helpful along the way. And we proposed a, a site to maybe move this house to that we thought was a good option to take us out of those two setbacks on the roads and then only go maybe up to the wetlands. But staff has come up with another option, and we're happy to, amenable to that and happy to, to do that as a plan going forward. You know, outside of that, I'm, you know, I just think we're, we're willing to, to work with the city, and just like other folks have said, like, we're, we're trying to do the right thing by the muni. But I think maybe this house was, was also built perhaps before some of these, you know, these, these rules were put in place, certainly before I bought the house. So it's just kind of where we're at, and that's what we're asking for.
You've got about eight and a half minutes left for rebuttal. You don't have any questions of staff, do you?
No.
Figured you guys have been talking quite a bit already. Does the board- Does the board have any questions of the petitioner? Anybody on the board?
Yeah, I have, I'll have a question for you. The addition of the over, the entrance? When was that? Why was that proposed? Or where was the original entrance actually on the original building as it now is?
Currently, the entrance is, if you look at the house from the front, it's on the left side. And we thought we might have more room in, in, on the, on the other side of the house, and so that's the way the, the plan was, was drawn up by an architect. But I'm also willing to, to put that entrance on either side of the house if, you know, if, if the board and staff thought that would be a better scenario. But as it's drawn up right now, it's, the entrance would be on the opposite side of the house that it currently is.
Does, does the post office department establish which is the front of your house by the address? In other words, I don't know what's on this, I don't, Timberline Drive, is your address Timberline Drive or is it?
The address is Chateau.
Chateau, so it's, it is on that side that you're proposing the entrance way?
Yeah, and, and, yes.
Fair enough.
Yeah. To conclude, I, at least as far as I understand, the post office is not delivering mail directly to folks' addresses in Girdwood, so we would have to get a post office box.
Okay.
Anyhow.
Man, you're with the territory.
Does anybody else have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
You stated earlier that when you purchased the house, you said about two, two and a half years ago, is that correct?
Correct.
You, you knew that there were, that you were going to have to do some repairs to the foundation, or did you find out after you purchased the house?
No, we, you know, we, we knew that the, the, the foundation was failing. You can put a ball on the island and the kitchen and it rolls off to the left pretty dramatically, so you can see it with a naked eye as well.
But that, it was disclosed by the previous owner?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you, you engaged with a contractor?
Yep.
After closing, correct?
Well, maybe even before. He may have come in to look at it just to kind of make sure this was a safe structure for us to spend time in until we, we got approval.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I would add, maybe if our real estate agent at the time told us about the Class C wetlands, which we didn't know initially, and he had said, or indicated to us that, oh yeah, this would be no problem and it would be taken care of through the Army Corps of Engineers, and all I had to do was make one phone call. And that's not been the case.
Good real estate professional. Yeah, this lot is extremely restricted by these wetlands. It's, it's basically unusable.
And, you know, I mow back there, so it's called the wetlands, but it's, right now it's wetter than it will be in August.
Well, and you could, if it's not, you know, the wetlands that they think it is, you could have someone come out there and classify it. There are companies that do that, and you could reduce the footprint of that wetlands based on their analysis. And it could potentially open it up to you in the future if you wanted to follow that. But right now, we're dealing with what we have. Mr. Hatcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was the, that was the other reason why we made the variance not specific like we have in the past. Like it's so many feet into the wetland setback, we made it to where he, he's, these, these people are able to encroach into the wetland setbacks because there's multiple places they'll be encroaching into it and just making sure they stay out of those, those front setbacks and just encroach into the wetlands.
Did anyone even survey the limits of the wetlands?
I believe their surveyor did, but it's based, it's not actual, it's based on the data from the municipality.
Yeah, I'm a surveyor.
Yes, I know.
I know how that goes. They probably popped it in from the GIS.
Correct, and I think if, I think if you look at page 13 in the top notes, wetland location is approximate located per Turnigan Arm Wetlands Map 22. It was updated in 2023, so 11/18/2023.
Yeah. So I mean, it's a good idea for you guys to pursue this maybe and get these wetlands actually delineated and surveyed, and it may be that it's smaller footprint than you think, has no bearing on the variance. You know, we're just here to resolve what we have before us.
I understand that, maybe for something else we might want to do with the property, that makes sense.
Down the road.
This is actually very close to the original spot. We had thought, hey, this would be, if we could move it, this is kind of where we want to move it, so.
Looks like the only place you can move it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
It makes it a little bit more difficult because of the side entrance there because you could slide that whole building up against the, the side setback if that front entrance wasn't, was around in the front.
Yeah.
And that would give you that five, about, I think it's probably about five feet, which would allow you to come, bring that whole building closer to the south side boundary.
You're just, are, are you referring to staff's proposal of moving that?
No, I'm looking at my own, thinking about it when I was reading through the document and wondering why you would offset for the new entrance with already having the difficulty of intruding into the, to the wetlands on the, maybe the northwest side there.
Yeah.
That's why I asked you about the entrance to the, to the building. If it was on the, if it was around on the short side of the building, then you could slide that whole building up towards the property line and, and further move it away from the wetlands in that respect.
There'd be a lot of things you guys can pursue. I mean, the one, the one thing that we need to, to talk about is the,
Is the existing.
The existing variance request. You guys can figure out the whole construction later. So, does anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
No.
Anything else? Okay, if you want to use the rest of your time, you can, otherwise we'll.
We'll write a little song.
We gotta let the public to talk.
I'm good, no, thank you.
Is there any, sorry, there's nobody out there. Is there anybody from community council, people? Anybody else want to talk?
Mr. Chair, we received an email for public testimony, but they did not give us a phone number to call them, and so I was going to read it into the record if that's okay.
Please do.
This is an email, phone testimony for case 2024-021 regarding variance from AMC 2107-020B12 to allow single-family dwelling to encroach in Class C wetland setback. My name is Max Wachner. I live at 540 Timberline Drive, two houses to the south of Mr. Ellison. I hope that Mr. Ellison can get the approval to encroach in the Class C wetlands. They have been great neighbors and should be allowed to make the necessary improvements to their property. Thank you, Max.
Thank you for that. With all that said, do you have any conclusions or if you're, if you're done, we'll close.
No, I've, I've said everything that I came to say.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So that closes the, the public testimony, and the matter will rest with the board. I'll need a positive motion, please.
I'll move that case number 2024-0021 to approve the variance from AMC 21.07.020B.12 to allow a single-residence dwelling to encroach upon the Class C wetland setback subject to the conditions as shown on page five of the staff report.
Thank you, and seconded by Mr., is it Zanto?
Santo.
Santo? Thank you. Yeah, and when you guys want to move, just hit the motion thing and, and it'll pop up there. Would you like to speak, Mr. Brenner, would you like to speak to your motion, please?
No, I think that I would like to see the motion approved in the sense that, Chair, first of all, my apologies.
No.
I'd like to see the motion approved in the sense that there could be some conditional changes made to it, but I, I don't think we need to go much further in that.
And Mr. Santo, do you have comments?
At this time, not really. I'm just, would urge, or I'd just like to say that I'm probably going to approve their variance, and I think they've done a lot of work to find out exactly what they want to do and what they can do. And with the space they're allotted, there's not a whole lot there, so, yeah, I'm moving to approve.
Thank you. I, I might add that in regard to condition H, that the minimum variance standard, it is met because really there is no option here. There's nowhere to move this thing, so I, I think that this is the minimum variance to make it possible for reasonable use with 1,500 square feet. Is there anybody else that would like to comment?
Sure. I'd like to add that, again, no department objections, and all four of the community comments were in support.
All right. Man, that doesn't happen when I talk.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is everybody ready to vote? Let's do it. A vote yes will approve the variance, no will not. Unanimous yes, the variance passes. So, go forth and build, but not in the wetlands.
At least not a lot in the wetlands.
Thank you for coming in, we appreciate it. Anybody need a break? Are we good? We have one more case, right? Anybody drink too much coffee? I don't, no, I'm good. So we got one more case before us, and it is case number 2024-0059. And would the, would the staff please describe the notice given?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On May 21st, 2024, a total of 126 public hearing notices were mailed. As of the writing, the comments have been received, and the Chiak Community Council did not provide comments on the case.
Thank you. Are there any objections to sufficiency notice in this case? I'm not seeing any, so you want to go ahead and present the case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for dimensional variance to table 2110-6, dimensional standards Chiaki River residential districts to allow existing sheds and a proposed addition to a single-family dwelling to encroach into front and side setbacks. The first variance that they're requesting is applicant is proposing to build an attached garage with additional living space. That would be roughly 1,327 square foot addition with 514 square feet of that i- in the setback. That, there's a, a design on page 20 that shows that. The placement of the garage and living space in the location is due to the large area occupied by the existing septic drain field, the well location, high water table, and the angled orientation of the single-family home. The rear, the rear yard does slope roughly 12% or a little bit greater on the rear two-thirds of the lot, which starts just about five or eight feet behind the, the house itself. This therefore requires approximately a 15-foot variance for the two-car garage and living space to encroach into the side setback on the eastern property boundary because the well and septic, or the septic is all located on the other side of the house on the western property. The variances two and three, those are sheds, sheds. One is 209 square feet, one is 280 square, three, three square feet. The sheds were existing on the property in 2016 when the applicant purchased the home. The code does allow two sheds, each 200 square feet or less, to be located within a side or rear setback. However, these sheds are slightly over the maximum requirement and require variance to be granted to remain. It should be noted there were no objections to the granting of variance by reviewing agencies. And in the findings, staff found condition one is met for variance one, the condition A. The subject parcel does have physical circumstances of the property regarding slope and high water table. As I mentioned, it does, right behind the house, it goes up a good portion in elevation. The parcel is served by onsite water and wastewater, and the septic system for the home is located on the western side of the lot. In condition A, variance two and three are met. They're small structures, not on foundations, and they may have been placed in their current location under the previous owner in regard to the septic drain field location, the high-end standing water between the, the structure and the hill, and then the hill itself for the shed located on top of the hill. Condition B, staff finds that there are some physical circumstances for variance one. The proposed home addition location would allow the property owner to maintain an appropriate separation from surrounding structures within the neighboring lots. The existing location of the structure, topography, and placement of onsite infrastructure with the septic creates limitations which would create an undue hardship for the owner in placement of an addition to the principal structure. In the matter of the sheds, they were existing when the owners purchased the property, and sheds are a right commonly enjoyed by other properties in the CER 6 district. Staff finds condition C is met for variance one. The applicant has chosen to place the structure in a location and orientation that will preserve design continuity of the existing structure, given considerations with the well, septic, drain field, the topography and the water on the site. The proposed location minimized further site disturbance beyond work necessary to increase the residential housing capacity of the subject parcel. With C, two and three, variances have been met. It's not, not self-imposed. The owners bought the property with existing sheds and location, and there's been no known issues with those. Condition D, standards met for all variances. Doesn't appear that the granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. The encroachment does not extend any, any abutting municipal rights away, and neighboring property owners will retain the ability to make useful, use of their land. The, the neighboring property is, it's, it's a corner lot, a long, kind of skinny corner lot, and the house is on the far end of that, so that the addition of this, they, it won't be right next to another structure. Standard E, staff finds it's met for all variances. The requested variances will not change the character of the zoning district of the rural CER 6. It's intended for those land areas where large lot development is desirable, which this is what it'll be. Granting this variance to encroach within the rear and side setbacks will not permit either a principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under Anchorage Municipal Code. Staff finds condition F is met for all variances. They have no known impacts to the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. G is, that's, single-family dwelling units are not subject to the Act of ADA. And then in the matter of H, staff finds the standards met for variance one. The proposed addition of a garage and living space will be constructed in a manner that preserves design continuity with the principal structure and is of reasonable size to ensure living space for residents without adding excess of bulk to the property. And in the matter of the two other shed variances, staff finds those are met. You know, the property was purchased, the sheds are nine square feet and 83 square feet in size over the maximum requirement, and the requested variance is the minimum variance that would allow continued use of the sheds. And with that, staff finds that variances one, two, and three have met all standards and recommends approval subject to conditions one and two found in the staff packet. So we're, they're going to be building a, you know, another, a garage and converting over the existing garage to living space. And if we take a look at page 25, that's a good, I don't know if you get the original color packets, but 25, you can kind of see there where there's a clearing, where that would work. That's kind, and then if we look at the has builts with all the septic well and topography, really that's the, the best location for an addition. The applicant is here tonight, and I believe Ms. Monfor will kind of explain everything as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions of staff? Nope. Okay, will the applicant please come forward and say your name again and spell it again and turn the microphone on again?
Hi, I'm Bethany Monfor, B-E-T-H-A-N-Y-M-O-N-F-O-R-E. Thank you for moving us forward tonight, thank you for the review.
So you got 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. So we have a three-bedroom home in Chiakiak, and you're probably familiar with the current housing market. It's very difficult to find a larger house for a reasonable price right now. We have two young children. I work from home, and so we're running out of space. Our house is 1,600 square feet. We really like the neighborhood that we're in. It's quiet, it's enjoyable. We are quiet and enjoyable, we want to stay there. It's in a community where my daycare is nearby, the school we want our kids to go to is nearby, and we really want to be able to use the property that we have to add on, to have more living space, make it potentially, you know, a dream home that you can stay in for a long time. We have talked to our neighbors about the potential add-on, and they were surprised that the setback is 25 feet, and then also concerned about their own sheds and properties. Told everyone I would not throw anyone else under the bus. But I think that the proposed addition and leaving the sheds where they are, it doesn't have any negative impact in the community or the neighborhood. Really, it could be a facelift, it's kind of a neighbor, an older neighborhood. It would be a more modern-style house. It would be a more modern style house. I can't think of anything that would have any negative impact and we wouldn't want to do anything that would have a negative impact in our community. So, yeah, if you have any questions about the packet, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, you got like eight and a half minutes left for rebuttal. Does the, anybody have any questions for Ms. Monfore? Monfore?
Well, Chair, please.
Yeah.
Why don't you want to move the sheds? Other than cost of doing it and time to do it?
I, one of the sheds, the one toward the rear of the house, it's, it's one with the earth. I don't think it can be moved. It's been there a really long time. I would hate to destroy it. We really like having that shed back there. I didn't even know it was there when we bought the house, it was pretty tucked away and our neighbor isn't bothered by it. It would be a huge burden. I don't, we would have to clear trees, we would have to do a lot to get back there, to move the shed. And I think it would just end up tearing it down. I don't think that that's an option.
Fair enough.
Any other questions? Any more questions? Sounds like no one's got any questions. So you can talk for another eight and a half minutes or?
I'm, I'm okay. I think there's a lot of detail in the packet, I hope you read it.
Yeah, I think everybody's read it and it sounds like you've been working with staff. I don't see anybody else here to talk. Does anybody else want to talk about this? Nope. Okay, if you don't have anything else, then we'll go ahead and close the hearing and?
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much. So matters with the board, can we have a positive motion, please? Oh, yeah, we got three variances, so we're going to have to do this three times. So we're, this will be for the? Yeah, so whoever does the motion, maybe just stick with it three times. Mr. Flynn?
I move in case 2024-0059 to approve a variance from AMC 21.10.060, table 21.10-6, table of dimensional standards Chiakiak Eagle River residential districts to allow an addition to a single-family structure to encroach 15 feet into the 25-foot side setback, subject to the conditions shown on page six of the staff report.
Seconded by Mr. Bennett. Mr. Bennett, do you have any further comments?
I have no further comment. Thank you.
You. Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I'll speak to my motion, it's going to be quick. Seeing that all eight conditions are met, I would urge a positive vote on this variance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion at the board?
I have no further comment.
Questions?
I'd like to add that it's still 10 feet to the side property even with going into the setback, which is the typical side yard setback in Anchorage. And no community objections or department objections.
Noted, thank you. Any other discussion? Everybody ready for the vote? So on the, this is for the first one, a yes will be for the variance, a no will be against it. Everyone vote, please. Variance number one passes unanimously. Can we have a positive motion for the second variance? When it pops up, there we go. Mr. Flynn?
I move in case 2024-0059 to approve a variance from AMC 21.10.060, table 21.10-6, table of dimensional standards Chiakiak Eagle River residential districts to allow an addition to a single-family structure to encroach 15 feet into a 20-foot, 5-foot setback, subject to the conditions shown on page six of the staff report.
And seconded by Mr. Bennett. Mr. Flynn, would you like to speak to your motion?
Once again, seeing that all eight conditions are met, I would urge a positive vote.
Mr. Bennett, do you have anything to add?
I do not have anything to add, Chair.
Does anyone else on the board have anything to add before we vote? See none, let's vote. Vote yes is for the variance. Once again unanimous, that's two down. Third, positive motion, please. Moved by Mr. Flynn, seconded by Mr. Bennett. Mr. Flynn, would you like to speak to your motion?
I move once again in case 2024-0059 to approve a variance from AMC 21.10.060, table 21.10-6, table of dimensional standards Chiakiak Eagle River residential districts to allow the side 283-square-foot existing shed to encroach 4.9 feet into the side setback, subject to the conditions shown on page six of the staff report.
Would you like to comment on your motion?
I have.
Seconded.
I have no additional comments.
Once again, as all eight are, conditions are met, I would urge a positive vote.
Thank you, any other comments from the board? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously, all three variances are granted, congratulations. Enjoy those sheds.
And the addition.
And the addition. And that is the last for the night. Oh, yeah. Craig Bennett? So we needed, it was another Bennett, it's really confusing. Welcome to the board. Good to have you, thanks for volunteering, we could always use more people. Appreciate you being here and? Is there any other, let's see, what else are we missing? Board member comments, anybody else have anything to say?
I will be absent on the next meeting in July, on the 11th, I believe it is. I'll be, I'll be somewhere in the, I'll be a long way away.
What is the date of the next meeting?
I believe it's the 11th.
The 11th, I believe.
If I'm not mistaken.
Trying to see, I think I may be, I'm gone as well.
Uh-oh.
I gotta go to Scotland for my daughter's graduation.
Oh, like that's important.
Sorry. Is that, how many board members do we have now? So we're going to have another five next time? Hopefully? Okay. I'll cancel the graduation, never mind. I could, it's like a 10-hour difference. Yeah. Okay, if no one else has any comments, we need a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. Thank you very much, everyone?
Very good.